Good evening, I'm calling. Calling. Calling to order. The April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. We are live tonight, but we also have a link to for people to dial in virtually. We have three items on the agenda tonight that really kind of have to be considered as one, one twenty Turnpike Road, FD one twenty Turnpike LLC modifications of a special permit, comprehensive permit and special permit, so. This is a continuation of previous hearings. Sorry.
The modification is a new one. So would you like me to read the?
Yes, read the, yeah, if you could, please.
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing located at the McCullough Hearing Room, Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four, at seven o'clock P M with regard to the petition of FD one twenty Turnpike LLC, located at one twenty Turnpike Road, map thirty seven, lot one twenty dash four. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to modify a notice of decision for a special permit dated August twenty first, two thousand nineteen, to remove language relating to a land donation. The property is located in the Residence A and Business Highway Districts. Relief is requested under section one seventy four dash nine and section one seventy four dash eight point five C ten.
Thank you. And for the applicant, if you could go ahead and state your name and position.
Yes, good evening, board members, I'm Brian Charville, the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for Ferris Development Group, here representing the applicant, which as your chef member said, is FD one hundred twenty Turnpike LLC.
Louis Levine, I'm an attorney representing the applicant. Applicants.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to? Discuss your, your request to for modifications of a special permit?
Yes, happy to recap where we are.
Sure.
This hearing tonight picks back up on forty B comprehensive permit application regarding this property. You'll recall that also there's a pre-existing public hearing to modify the two thousand five special permit, which this board had issued. The specific purpose of that modification is to have the driveway be shared both by the existing office buildings and this forty B if it would be permitted. The new hearing, as staff began to mention, is to modify a two thousand nineteen special permit that was issued by this board. It specifically allowed construction of an approximately five hundred space parking garage at the rear of the property to serve the two office buildings. That was sought by a prior owner of the property. Their thought was in order to lease up the office buildings, they needed that many parking spaces. Needless to say, that was just a few months before COVID. And the garage has never been built. It's never been drawn by an architect more than just a sort of a site plan layout. And so part of what our predecessor owner had offered in order to get that approval was to donate some of the land to the town. And we're here to ask that this board modify that special permit simply to remove the land donation requirement. You know, we've looked extensively at this. In addition to this board's permit that allowed the garage, there were a planning board, special permit and a site plan approval and a conservation commission order of conditions that were all issued in contemplation of this garage. And the garage has not been built and we have no intent of building it. There's just not a need for that many parking spaces to serve those buildings. And so this wouldn't change the two thousand nineteen special permit other than to remove any mention of the land donation. And yes, the, the land in question that had been proposed to be donated is what is now the site of the proposed forty B.
Some issue was raised after and for the first time, our initial Board of Appeals meeting. Prior to that time, we discussed with the town and specifically with town council, what issues we needed to address. And the only issue we needed to address was, although I disagreed, but was modification of the two thousand and five special permit because that allowed the driveway to serve a particular singular use. And so we applied for that. Somewhat after, we were told oh, that there is this two thousand and nineteen special permit. And as Brian indicated, a condition of that permit was donation of land. I was somewhat surprised, A, about hearing about it. B, when we looked into it. You know, and as they say, you know, everything is okay until a second lawyer moves into town. But you know, we were a bit taken aback because the permit had never been exercised. As Brian indicated, it was for a parking garage. Everyone knows parking garage was never built, there was never a building permit for it, there was no action taken to exercise the permit. The permit in itself, in of its own conditions, references the provisions of your own bylaw, which says the permit is only good for one year. And the bylaw itself, irrespective of that provision, which was incorporated into the permit, you know, had that provision, the general laws also carries special permit, it's not only go for three years. So in, in any event, you know, we were of the firm and reasonable position that permit didn't get exercised, doesn't exist. If it doesn't exist, you know, therefore the condition can't be applied. It seemed very onerous to say the building never got built, but we get the benefit of some land donation that was conditioned upon the building getting built. Recently, we've reached out to the building commissioner, the, the new building commissioner, and do we have a copy of that email?
No, I have it electronically, but.
Okay. And I'll paraphrase it and Brian can correct me if wrong, we asked the building commissioner if that special permit was any good. And he's, you know, these are the I think Brian can read it.
Yep.
Maybe rather than me paraphrasing, why don't you just read it?
Yeah, I specifically asked him, I referenced the four permits I've mentioned to you all tonight, all issued in two thousand nineteen related to the garage. And I asked him if we wanted to pull a building permit under those if we may do so. And he said, no, because of the passage of time, each one is expired, and so you could not act upon them. And so that to us is pretty telling that the building official, you know, who's, who is Lou mentioned is the zoning enforcement officer, is saying that there was a fall. So that, that's what this, this email relates to is him agreeing with our interpretation, so we can hand that up.
But we're in a conundrum.
Well.
We're in a conundrum.
You are, but I mean, I think we've stated here previously with our own town council, you know, I, respectful of the building commissioner, I think our town council has weighed in that it, it is, he does think it's still active. Also, I know that you've been in front of the planning board and you were with them at the last meeting, it didn't go forward simply because the abutters had failed to be notified, so.
Lack of notification.
Right, so I, I, I'm just gonna state the obvious conundrum from my perspective and maybe that's the way the rest of the board feels too is, you know, you're clearly already going forward to try to discuss with the planning board, what are the options as far as the land donation goes? And I mean, we can, we could certainly have someone from the planning board weigh in tonight if we need to, but my initial take is, it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse.
Well, I guess Brian and I were kind of doing this for background. With all due respect to town council, the person that makes zoning decisions is the zoning enforcement office. Town council can give advice, but the zoning enforcement officer is the one that makes the decision. So you know, we can go, maybe tomorrow morning, the zoning enforcement officer, for some, for whatever reason, will change his mind. But I would suggest that as long as he is of the opinion that the permit is labs, that's all that counts. And again, you know, I understand town council's position, will that, you know, you know, flummoxed about it. But the, the person that counts is the, you know, the building commissioner or the zoning enforcement officer, as the case may be. All right. Just like when, when you were under a decision as a board, what counts is your decision, not the advice that you get from town council.
Right.
Okay, and not the advice that you get from me.
But we take, right, well, obviously we take that advice.
No, you take consideration, the way you take in consideration what, you know, the applicant says and what the audience says and.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Well, well, I mean, can you maybe explain what the meetings with that planning board are about then?
Well, because Brian and I, you know, and myself in particular, but Brian, we'd rather, you know, work it out, okay?
Okay.
Than, you know, throw grenades at each other. So we went to the planning board or the applicant went to the planning board with the hope and expectation, hey, look, even, you know, it's like any other controversy, you know, you try and resolve it. If we can resolve it, okay, I don't need to, you know, go to the Supreme Court and have them say I'm right or wrong, okay?
Right.
All right, so the applicant went, you know, you know, without prejudice, saying, okay, look, I don't think this is the case, but I'm willing to do this, I'm willing to make, you know, this alternative offer, offers, you know, A, B, C, or D, or Q, or whatever. And you know, there's been a lot of pushback, there's been pushback by the conservation commission this week, there's been pushback by the.
Stewardship.
Stewardship Committee. So I don't see a bright horizon, you know, for quote working out, all right? I mean, the other thing I would point out to this board, which is the same standard, is when you apply for a special permit, okay, then the board has to act reasonably, et cetera. You know, and failing of which, if somebody appeals, you know, they can get a special permit. So if we put us back in the situation where we, for at least the purpose of discussion, we need a modification, all right? Then the issue before this board and the other board, this is the same standard with the planning board, the conservation commission, I would think it's even less because, you know, the order expired and never got used, would be, is it unreasonable to modify the special permit given the conditions that Brian outlined, i.e. the garage never got built? Is it reasonable to say, oh, no, you gotta make a land donation of basically the entire track? All right, for something, so that's where we are.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I mean, and I, I'm certainly willing to let the, my fellow board members weigh in, but it, what it appears to me is due to administrative oversight, which was failure to notify the abutters.
Oh, no, that, yeah, that, that.
Right, but, but the, the discussion with the planning board was about the land donation because of an administrative issue.
Yeah.
You know, that didn't happen, so it makes it feel, I don't know, don't take it the wrong way, but it makes it feel like an end around to come here with a special per, with a special permit to say, remove it.
No.
When the, I, well, but the very fact of what you were discussing with the planning board was the land donation, right?
We, we, we haven't. Um, Mr. Williams, I appreciate what you're saying, and it was purely administrative thing, but we had the hearing tonight.
Yeah.
And we wanted to at least present, lay, start the discussion with this board.
Okay.
And we have to appear in front of all three boards and commissions
Right.
for modifications, since all three issued two thousand nineteen decisions.
Sure.
You, you all need to modify that, we'd ask, need you all to modify your special permit, the planning board to modify their two, and conservation to modify their order.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we're in a situation that if the planning board doesn't modify, okay, well, you still have to make a separate consideration as to whether you want to modify it.
Right.
And we've been told the conservation commission has to make a third one. So at the end of the day, you know, there's three separate votes, the fact the planning board, say they vote to modify it, well, this board could turn around and say, we're not gonna modify it, okay? I hope not, but that could be an alternative, or vice versa, you could say, we're modifying it, the planning board's not, so it's, it's somewhat, it's not chicken and egg, it's actually three separate votes.
Some of it is, because I would say we would, we would, I, I feel like we would take guidance from the discussion with the planning board when it comes to the land donation. Conservation is a, a little bit of a different issue, I don't want to, I don't want to touch that, but that's my take on it anyhow, because what I saw was very clearly an intention to work with the planning board to sort out the, the land donation issue, so I don't, you know, I'm, and I'd be willing to take the opinions of my fellow board members on this, but that's just my take on it, is it, it feels like we ought to have a resolution through the planning board when it comes to the land donation.
And if, okay, and again, I'm not asking the board to make a decision tonight.
Right, okay.
I guess.
I, I also wanted to say, to be clear, we're, I don't think we have any interest in throwing grenades either, like, we, we want to work with you, but this is obviously, it's a little bit of a, a gnarly thing to get over, I would, I think you would agree.
Gnarly is a good word.
Yeah.
I'll write that down. I like gnarly.
And we knew we had to be in the modification at some point, so we thought
Okay.
it was good just to couple it up with the forty B public hearing.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and we were told that with respect to the forty B, which, you know, that peer review hasn't been accomplished yet, so we're not gonna really be able to address anything on the forty B aspect.
Yeah, we, we do have, and Ms. Davis has been effective at finding some, some additional resources to send out for peer review, so rest assured, we're, we're not waiting, like, we're, we're actually trying, trying to get done, I, I understood.
And we understand, but given that, you know, the peer review hasn't inputted back to the board.
Right.
And to have a conversation about the forty B, you know, putting that hat on for a moment, it's not gonna accomplish anything tonight.
Right.
Right, so you need your peer review, and then we can, you know, then focus on the forty B.
Mm-hmm.
Separately to this modification.
So, so in terms of the modification to remove the, the donation, what is your expectation for this evening, or what was your hope? Is it really just a discussion because it was on the, you're on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, again, I don't, we're not here to pressure the board.
Okay.
And we, you know, we have the other boards to go through anyway. We just want to start the dialogue, and we wanted to make it clear, you know, what the building commissioner inspector has said. And, you know, we want a path going forward. But again, if you say, hey, look, we can't do anything tonight, we want to think about it, I understand it.
Okay, well, this is, you know, this is not all about me, so I.
No, 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 I meant.
I would, no, I'm just, I just mean, I, I want to make sure my, the other board members, if they have opinions or concerns, as well as members of the, of the public and, you know, the boards, I just want to give them an opportunity to speak.
And for full disclosure, because it'll get brought up at some other point, I don't want somebody to say, Brian, or I didn't mention something. Neither one of us were involved in any manner, means or form with the two thousand and nineteen permit. Unfortunately, we found out about it recently. In that permit, it, it approved the parking garage. But it also, to some reason, mentioned about putting some pavers. I have no idea why, it was, you know, and it talked about some pavers in front of the existing office building. So, you know, one of the arguments is, well, they put the paver in, so therefore they exercise a special permit. Well, I, again, it's my common sense, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but if that's the case, we'll remove the paver. It's really, it's beyond a tail wag of the dollar.
Right, okay.
What we gotta say tonight.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Well, again, I'd like to just give the, the board members the opportunity to speak, Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, no, I share your concerns. Again, I feel like the, the land donation was part and parcel with the agreement with the planning board for the project, and so I don't think it's appropriate for this board to modify the special permit, because to me, that's an issue that needs to get resolved, the planning board. So, and again, I wasn't part of that decision, so I don't know the, the specifics, and I don't want to misstate myself, but it's my understanding that that was a negotiation, the land donation was a negotiation with the planning board for approval of the, of the site and the project. So there was some horse trading likely going on with the planning board to get that done, so I certainly don't feel comfortable with trying to
Okay.
go, going forward on that. I hear your concern with respect to the building commissioner, I do want to just make sure, you know, we get some more information, literally, he's brand new.
Exactly.
I don't know if there's enough context with respect to the emails with respect to that.
Right.
I have a different comment. I'll, I'll keep my mouth shut on the pavers and the special conditions.
Okay, all right. Just going down the line, Doris. Make sure your microphone's on.
Oh, my, my, sure.
Sorry.
You know, I'm of the belief that I certainly hope that the planning board conservation can work with you and of course work with us, but the way I understand it is we'll have three votes, it will return to us and someone can stop me at some point. We're being a better position to vote on it. I have a general question, and it's probably gonna come up as we maybe hear from someone from planning. And when this was negotiated, if someone recalls when it was negotiated, there was no act on either side to actually get, or, you know, secure the land. And if I'm incorrect, please tell me, that I, I find a good question as to be we often come across situations where I, I really want agreements followed, if we donate land, six acres of land is substantial, and I have a question in my mind, when we get to the next level, why was that not acted upon, or what was the reasoning behind that, or we just forgot it was an administrative error?
I think at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, I think the permit never got exercised, and but now maybe somebody will have a different story, but, you know, you know, we've all been involved in situations where there's a condition, let's call it grant of parcel land, and they build a project, and then years later, somebody says, but they never granted the land, that's not the situation. Permit never get exercised, and if I was in the owner position, didn't exercise it?
And along those lines, Ms. Cahill, there is a statute which we've raised that requires that donations be accepted by the recipient, so the select board would have had to take action to accept the donation.
I saw that in some of the memorandum.
Yeah, you, you know, you see it on the select board's agenda to accept five hundred dollars from the United Way for a town program, and they vote on each of those regardless of their size. And there was no acceptance here.
Okay, I'm hoping.
Garage, which is, you know, a massive building, just never got built.
I actually understand that aspect of it pretty.
Context. From the town's perspective, I don't see them looking for the, the donation.
In fact, if it were, you know, is actually true, or once I start hearing from other people, ninety nine, I'm interested, ninety nine percent of anything did not occur. You know, you're just a couple of pavers.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, I, I understand that. This, I have a secondary question, and I'm hoping someone from the public's gonna shed some light on it. I did take the time to read each of all the special permit decisions up and through two thousand nineteen, and in each of those cases, as we've gone through the history of allowing the original three buildings, which were eventually only two buildings, there's always a discussion of the unusual nature of the lot, the lot short on frontage, the reasoning behind the, the road, or actually the driveway that eventually came in. And different uses were addressed since the inception of the original per, permit, so it's office building, but there was always an allowance to economic conditions in the findings, each and every decision, that something different could happen and that land would need to be used for something else, never mentioning forty B, of course. And we're not discussing forty B, but if someone from planning or the public has insight as to in regards to land donation, in balancing, sort of recognizing that lot was always difficult from inception, this particular lot's long and narrow, and what would that land have been used for, like, just some insight and background, what would you have done with the six acres? That's it, that's, those are my questions, and if I didn't make myself clear, please re-ask me.
Thank you, Doris.
Okay.
Paul?
So, as usual, I'm a little confused, or need some clarification. What, so as this first agenda item, we're, what is looking to be modified from us, I still don't fully like, understand why we're discussing this.
The request is that your two thousand nineteen special permit no longer reference any land donation.
But embarrassed to admit, so I, I would have sat on the two thousand nineteen decision.
I think, I think I did as well.
Yeah, I don't recall.
The mechanics of the.
I don't, yeah, I don't recall, and I think Mike just brought this up, was that, was the land donation done at the zoning board level, or is that at the planning board level? Because I don't, I'm embarrassed to admit, I don't, I don't recall doing that.
It's referenced in all four.
So we, we, like, that was one of our orders, a condition in, as far as the parking garage goes? Okay.
I, I wasn't there in two thousand nineteen, but when I read the decisions, it looks like they were drafted in parallel on whether or not, you know, your board separately considered it. It wound up in your decision.
Okay, I just.
I mean, otherwise, hey, we wouldn't be here on that issue.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just don't, I don't recall.
There's a lot of belt spenders in those three decisions.
So but and again, just like to super simplify, like, what everyone's already stated is that the project from the original owner of the property that received all the permits was never started, and no land was actually, was actually deeded, granted, or anything of the such. So it's, so it's just been nothing.
Indeed, there was never an A and R plan approved by the planning board that would have created the donation land separately to be donated.
So wasn't, yeah, it wasn't subdivided, there was no, would it? Would it have been an A and R then, or would it have been, there would have been, okay. I've seen this, I've, I've seen this before, like, with us, from things that, like, happened way in the past. And then, you know, then land came, you know, or, or something came back in front of us, and it was, you know, from way back when, and geez, you know, this was said, and I've seen it work both ways, I've seen it be like, whoa, the, you know, the building commissioner said I could do this back in nineteen eighty four. Well, he shouldn't have. And then we had to discuss it further, and then I've seen it, you know, I've seen it happen the other way too, where where things were, said they were gonna get done, but they didn't because it wasn't done, so it didn't make sense to do it. I get it now that you're a new owner, so the past owner made, you know, made arrangements to get a parking garage built because it was necessary for the project at hand. That's no longer at all part of the equation here, and this is a, like, a, a different use and a different use proposal. Not here in town, but I mean, I've been involved in situations where it's my own property that have developed where, you know, you haven't done anything yet, then you're like, well, wait a second, maybe that's not the best idea. You know, time goes by, and then you're like, you're back in front of the, you know, you're back in front of the powers that be with a, with a, with a better idea, or an idea that is, you know, more consistent with what's going on these days, so that, you know, that I, that I get and under, that I get and understand. It's just, I just don't remember doing the, the two thousand nineteen decision.
So Laura actually found it, she was gonna just share a part of the decision, it was like item ten or something on the, on the list, there was, there's a lot of conditions in there. So, I don't know, I'd like to think we can be forgiven for not remembering that specific detail, but, but yeah, this is, there it is.
That language, Mr. Chairman, you know, is consistent or similar, or I don't want, maybe identical to what's carried forward in all the permits, it looks like there was an authorship that spread out over all the permits.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yep, there it is.
That's there.
Yes, my name.
Yeah. No, I, I don't need to be a stickler on language. I read this today, yesterday. It says will be, I, I'm not gonna be a stickler on English, but it does say will be. Doesn't say have to be.
Well, that's.
I know, I know it's semantic, but, well, that's what we're down for.
I mean, again, and if that was I, I mean, I, I don't know, that's, that is that has germane to having a parking garage built, not.
But that's it.
Yeah, I'm kind of.
Exactly.
Which never got built.
I'll give you this if you give me.
Right, so that's not, you know, and again, it's, you know, so.
If this happens, that happens.
Again, but I still don't understand what we're, like, what we're looking to modify, because we're not looking to. Can you please modify point 10? Like, I don't think that's the request here tonight. It's just.
It is.
Oh, it is. It is.
Remove that.
You were so close. Ah, now I'm now I'm starting to get this. Okay. It it's a difficult. But you're not looking to.
Built.
But you're not looking to do points one through nine.
Exactly.
Correct.
That's why.
So we're not. That's why that's my that's my confusion. We're not.
I I think it's I think it's just a procedure, Paul, to to say where the special permit just basically says waive the. You know, item 10 here on the 6.2 acre land donation is their specific request in the in the special permit.
I I think we're, I agree, Mr. DePantis, and I don't mean that in any argument of, hey, this is. A very semantic angels on ahead of a pinned discussion. If. You you know, we we take the position that we never built the garage. And if you agree, then there's nothing to waive if the permit doesn't exist. Okay, alternatively, if someone says, no, it still exists. And therefore, the Board of Appeals in this case has to delete it, so as to say, you're deleting a condition. The remaining permit is irrelevant today. So you're deleting something from something that's irrelevant. And I understand, you know. That's the. You know, the 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 logic that, you know, it's confusing.
And a couple of practical points, sort of taking a step back to the forty B. This modification allows the forty B discussion really to resume. And that's to, we've been saying since day one, but to achieve, you know, a stated goal of the town, which is to have more affordable houses. And and also interesting about the garage is we've leased up fully the building or almost fully, more than ninety percent of the building on 120 Turnpike. And it's perfectly adequately parked. So it's it's strange to us that there was ever a thought that there was a business need for such a large park construction.
Yeah, I. I I, you know, I guess. You know, without the labor, there's two ways to look at this is that we're required to modify something that doesn't exist anymore. But I'll just say we're required to modify it, failing to modify it. The land is supposed to be donated and we can't build on it. Okay, or it doesn't exist anymore and, you know, that's our argument. You know, we're going to trudge through with the forty B one way or another. And, you know, so. That that's kind of where we are right now. And, you know, to me, coming full circle, what I said to Mr. Williams in the beginning. Is even if we take the. For the purpose of discussion, argument, whatever. That this condition exists and then, you know, by coming to you and to the planning board. It would be, in my opinion, unreasonable to say, you know, we're not modifying. Given the circumstances, the garage never got built, et cetera. You know, because you say, oh, we're not modifying it. And we're going to now mandate that you donate the land, even though the garage didn't get built. Again, I would imagine that a third party would say that's not reasonable. But, you know, I've been wrong before and I'll be wrong again, so it's kind of where we are.
Okay, yeah, I think I I mean, I think we understand the point pretty well here. Jamie?
Hi. Few quick points. First of all, I agree with everything David said in the beginning that I think we're playing the cart before the horse here. It sounds like even in the previous iteration, all the all the boards, the planning board and the ZBA all kind of worked together to make sure. That there was an agreement with what to do with this land. So I wouldn't want our board kind of unilaterally to make that decision at this time, which does not say that. We would be against coming up to some sort of agreement. It's just saying I I think there needs to be more discussion. I I've also thought a lot about why that. I wasn't part of that 2019 discussion, but I know that the last time we were here, I heard a lot of concerned citizens about. Talk about the height of the building, how it's going to be affected. When you're walking the trails, how it's next to that open land. So even if, right, we decide that, okay, the garage wasn't built, that special permit is no more applicable, do away with it. I still think we're in the same spot, in a sense. We're we're still having a large building that's going to affect that land. So. I I don't know where I'm going with this exactly, but I I guess it feels like we're probably having the same discussions that happened or similar. In 2019, I'm guessing. And again, I wasn't there. So I would imagine that whether. It's this acreage, I don't know what the attorneys are going to decide on that. I don't know what the other boards, what we're going to come to agreement on. But it it does seem like we need to be cognizant of how this building is going to affect that open land. And I think that's why that donation was there in the first place. So it it's something I've thought a lot about. And I I do agree. I think we all agree. It's very confusing to ask for an amendment to something you say no longer exists. Or is no longer valid. In a sense that it was almost makes the argument that it is valid if we need an amendment to it. So I think that's very confusing.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
To that point, going into the planning board this coming Monday, which is when that modification hearing will begin in earnest. Our hope is to have a, you know, a negotiation. We've already begun to offer them alternatives in lieu of this donation, other land. Other things that the the applicant can do for the for the town and for that adjacent concert pre-existing conservation land. And so that's sort of the the option, whereas litigation over these things that Lou's been raising is really the alternative. So we're trying to be reasonable.
I I I understand. I'm just saying, I think whether it's a parking garage or the forty B or some other building. It's kind of, we're at the same spot.
Yeah. It it would be helpful when we hear from public planning or conservation. I did read through your comprehensive list of offers and that's going to help me when we return eventually to vote. So, you know, how they feel that would fit in, although there's going to be a meeting tomorrow night.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Doug?
So just a quick question. I'm an alternate on this one, right? I'm not voting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just more for clarity. So I I definitely agree. It feels like it'd be great that the planning board has, you know, you know, opined upon this first, right? So we're not first out of the gate. I am definitely confused that. Special permit was approved over four years ago. It's been more than three years. It hasn't been acted upon. To be honest, none of this is valid, right? So and I don't think. If you didn't build the garage, you'd be giving 6.2 acres of land, right? It's it's all or nothing type of thing. I think if some pavers were installed, that's pretty de minimis and would think really odd from my perspective that it suddenly invokes all of the conditions. So I'm just saying that out loud. So I just don't think this is really a valid. Now, if something had to be modified, what's confusing to me. I'm not sure we could do this, but I'd be more comfortable that we're simply acknowledging that the permit is just no longer valid, all of it, period. As opposed to just removing one finding because then it makes it weird because almost like, does it start the clock again? And does it mean that you could build a garage with nothing? No. So so from my perspective, I think. And again, this is more with town council on you guys as to the direction they've given you, but to me. I'd be more comfortable saying that the permit is just not valid, right? It's no longer valid. None of the conditions are in place and. That's it. As opposed to just removing one finding from the because it's almost like we're reaffirming it. With one less condition, which doesn't make sense.
Then build the garage.
Which doesn't, so.
Which isn't you want.
Yeah.
Do you want the special permit and then remove that condition and you're going to build a garage?
Correct.
You're just not moving forward at all.
So so I'm again, that's getting into the nuances, but my perspective is I don't. Think it's valid in the first place, but again, that's different. Town council is giving you guys different advice. My perspective was the board was going to vote on this. And again, I'm not voting on this one. I would say just really. The vote would be to confirm that none of it is valid anymore. And therefore, there's no rights under it in any shape, whether it's building a garage or the donation. So that would just, you know, from my perspective. I don't agree with Jamie either. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, I think this is just. I feel like this is a bit of a distraction in the whole discussion right now because I don't think it's valid. We do have a housing crisis. We are not compliant with our chapter forty B laws at this point. So so it's again, it's just it feels like this is a bit of a distraction for us and everyone, to be honest. I did have one question about the project site and it was more of a question of. I know you guys have a lower part. Again, I think it's an open hearing on all topics, right, related to this, right? You put a dog park and a playground on the lower part of the site and the buildings on the upper part of the site. Did you guys ever consider putting the building on the lower part of the site? As opposed to pushing it all the way up against the breakneck hill reservation? So. I'm just saying, because you obviously, there's a lot of site work to get to the top of the hill. And it is a fairly long area as well, right? And again, I'm not saying I moved the building to see if it would fit, but I'm just trying to say, did you look at that different site plan? Because again, that would lower it on the hill, push it back. So just I'd throw that out there as I was just curious if that was something that was considered. And I wasn't there at the site walk. I wasn't yet on the ZBA. So with. Mass housing, not mass housing or the original site walk during the chapter forty B update.
I don't think that we have considered that. In part because that's the part of the lot where the lot line is at a diagonal. Back from the south back toward Route nine in the the nursery. And so I think it makes it hard to cite the building there.
Just saying, we'd lower it on the hill. Something else that may again, just because I think as Jamie said, we're going to get into this whole. Site plan related issue of where the building sits, the amount of parking and obviously. There's also wetland near there, so it's all just trying to figure the geometry. And so. Just I was just curious if that was considered when you guys did your initial layout. So that's all. That's all my questions for now.
Well, I think it's a reasonable question and when we get the merits of the forty B. We'll we'll I'll make sure we respond, you know, either explaining why or moving the bill.
Okay. I don't know if anybody from the public has anything they want or or another board has anything they want to.
Sorry, I wrote notes. I really couldn't find them. Mimi Latrell, I'm the chair of the planning board. So the situation with the special permit at the zoning board of appeals in the permits, this site plan in the. Lower impact development special permit at the planning board are two entirely different situations. The special permit at the ZBA was for a parking garage, period. It was never built. It wasn't exercised. It's gone as far as, you know, I'm concerned. And I can't understand how you can. Remove findings from an approved decision, like the findings are the historic record. And that's what the the board took into consideration when it granted that permit. How can you say? You know, no, they didn't and and take that away. And the permit's already expired. So I I don't understand the whole modification of that to begin with. The planning board raised this issue about the donation of land in its letter to mass housing. Before the eligibility was even issued. So this has been out there and the planning board's been saying it. It just got listened to recently, but it's not that it was just raised recently. The planning board decision for the site plan was for the garage and then various other site improvements. More than two paving stones. It was a whole reworking of in between the buildings and. Patio and all kinds of other things. And according to our town town council, it was a recorded decision. It was exercised and that makes that condition for the donation of land valid. And it's a condition with the planning board permits. As well as a finding, but it's only a finding with the zoning board permits. I think that's all that I have, but. Town council. Is adamant that this is an enforceable condition and that the site plan was acted upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree this obligated issue and that this is maybe I'm Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. If you could. Concerned resident.
If you could just get a little closer to the.
Yeah, sure. I'm Paul Carter. I live at Six Hillside Avenue. I'm a concerned resident. And my position is that. This is a great project. It's a great idea. This is affordable housing. It's in the wrong place. I'm a civil engineer. I've done it for thirty years. I did a number of land development work. I understand that it's hard to do these projects. I find it interesting that the applicant is talking about end around. Because with this project. I see just about nothing but end around. In terms of my comments here. And I don't be mean to be disingenuous. I did land development projects. So anyway, my comments is that. Once again, you can't eliminate the text in a in an already decision. So. The original decision is not part of the forty B process. You know, this is getting confused with the the special permit and such. You know, the applicant would like to be all be considered part of the forty B process, but there are different parts to it. And that's part of the issue is that there needs to be a definitive subdivision plan submitted. Required by mass housing that a preliminary subdivision plan be submitted. And the issue of whether there is a lot or not, right near this one lot, okay? And they want to have a second lot, which is perfect for the proposed affordable housing. But they haven't proposed a vehicle for doing it. Okay, we can't really go forward. This is not an A and R. The attorney at one of the last meetings agreed that this wasn't appropriate as an A and R with the town council. Okay, so the other thing is, you know, so we talked about what might be an appropriate exchange. Between the town and the developer in in consideration of the six acres which was donated to the town. The alternative proposed by the developer are $25,000 plus reinstalling some screening. That had already be originally shown on the previous site plan that is taken off of the current site plan. So they have something to negotiate with. This in terms, if you want to talk about value of this conservation land, the six acres in South Borough. If you have one acre lots, one acre lot is worth well in excess of $300,000. My tax bill values my lot, which is nothing like what would be built here at $300,000. Six lots at $300,000 is $1.8 million. It's not 25,000. So. The developer thinks that this is just a common driveway. You you guys know what common driveways are. They're for A and Rs. That's so you don't have to build, you know, individual driveways along frontage. This this is a definitive subdivision and not to say that it has to be a fancy road. Not to say that it can't be the existing road that's there. But it still has to go through a definitive subdivision process or at least acted upon by the Board of Appeals as a subdivision process. That's basically, I mean, my other comments is at one of the hearings was talked about that a sidewalk needed to be provided. Because this is going to be for people, it'll be for kids. Mass Highway Department has built sidewalk all on Route nine because they're committed to. Multimodal transportation and walkable. So at this point, the site plans don't show the back of the proposed sidewalk. They don't show adequate labels for the sidewalk. And that needs to be done. The other point that was made is there's been no peer review yet. And and whoever's responsible for that, it really doesn't matter. But there are a number of site issues. So it's very clear that a peer review is very important in this issue. So because of the point I make that this is a tough place to do this project. The other thing is, you know, South Borough has a maximum three story. It's in the zoning. Every zoning district has three stories. The only four story buildings are Madison Place up on the hill. You think one of those apartment buildings, next time you drive by Madison Place, look up there and see whether you think that building. Is appropriate way back in here adjacent to this conservation land. Walked my dog for ten years on this conservation land. It's priceless. There is no other conservation land in town that comes close to it. Realizing the town and the residents who use that property aren't residential abutters. Realizing the town and the residents who use that property aren't residential abutters, but those people that use that property are residential abutters.
Understood. I, I, I would like to just make a point here, we are, I think what we're really going for here tonight, I, I think we're probably continuing so that we allow the planning board process to work out. So, I think a lot of the, the concerns you brought up, Mr. Carter, been brought up before, I'm just, I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's time, I know everybody wants to make their, their viewpoint known, I just don't want to keep going over the same ground, like, we already talked about how, yeah, there's no residents there, but doesn't mean there's no abutters, so we get that point. I think I've been involved enough of these that, like, what, what, all I want to do is make sure we're not repeating the same arguments, but, but thank you for your inputs.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Southborough Open Space Preservation Commission, and we've discussed this project proposal and the modification at the planning board, which tonight's hearing at the CBA was sort of surprising, and we, removing language of an already recorded permit, which was not a condition of the permit, it was a finding that your conditions or your permit were based on, and the permit is not in existence anymore, it makes no sense to take the language out. It seems like going back and erasing comments in your minutes that were previously approved like it never happened, just seems like it's bad process, and it doesn't impact anything because the, the permit has expired, so why do it? I just did want to, and not to go over the specifics of the 40B, but some of the comments made when you were discussing this, that were brought up. This town, the, the topic about the, why wasn't the open space accepted or transferred? This doesn't make it right, but it doesn't mean it doesn't ha, it doesn't need to happen forward. This town has a long history of not accepting open space that's been required in permits, and we have, I've been on the Open Space Commission for over 20 years, and we have seen where we didn't know, and things have come forward a decade later, and the town still moves forward with them. Those conditions are still valid, part of road acceptances, part of subdivision, you know, things don't happen, it's something I believe the selectmen are actually looking at now, how to make sure things get a process for things to happen, so I'm not pointing finger blaming at anyone, was, whose responsibility was it? It didn't happen, doesn't mean it's not supposed to happen. So, you know, that is a long-held reality of this town, doesn't mean that because they didn't do it, it doesn't have to get done. Another comment that was made is that, and I don't disagree, but a stated goal of the town is to have affordable housing. Well, another stated goal of the town is to have open space. And the Open Space Preservation Commission has been charged by the master plan to work towards acquiring more open space, and I will tell you, we're looking at 18 acres, is it, over on Johnson Farm on Northborough Road, for over $4 million? Low-hanging fruit is land that's already supposed to become to the town, that we're not spending the money on, and in regards to affordable housing, if you're looking at the town's needs as part of this decision, because you're saying that, you know, when you're considering this, the town needs more affordable housing, you have to consider the fact that we have the MBTA communities coming up, with that zoning requiring 10% of, I'm looking at over 100 units near, near me, other areas are getting, you know, we're talking 750 units potentially, they're not all going to be built at once, but some of these are going to happen right away, you're going to be getting different types of housing plus affordable, at the 80%, 80%, right? The Open Space Commission is working with Sharpsey to work to try to see if there's a path forward to buy that land on Northborough Road, for not just open space, but to have some of it be for affordable housing, that could be at the 50, 60% that is also needed. We're only building the 80%, so I'm not convinced that this one project in this really inappropriate location is the way the town needs to move forward to satisfy our affordable housing needs. And I will tell you, I am an affordable housing advocate, I'm not against this because it's housing, I'm against it because it's the wrong project in the wrong place. And one final thing about Noah Butters, there's Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, and then there's a 2-point-something acres, maybe 2 and 1/2 acres, adjacent to the, to this property and Breakneck Hill that was donated by Capital Group, and that is deeded to the citizens of Southborough. So the citizens of Southborough are direct abutters to this property, and it's a little bit concerning, I understand that the project proponent is not obligated to send every citizen on a butter notification, but somebody certainly should have done something to allow all of the citizens of the town to know that their property rights are being impacted by this proposal, and there's been no, you know, the selectmen are noticed, notified, I believe that's the proper procedure, but somebody had the due diligence to notify every citizen in the town that these hearings are happening, and that hasn't happened, and they're the abutters. So it's every citizen of the town that's an abutter here, thank you.
Joy Screenleaf, I'm the Chair of the Stewardship Committee, and as you know, the Stewardship Committee is on record opposing this project because of the vast detrimental effects it will have on the conservation land, which obviously is highly valued by the residents of Southborough, who are in fact the abutters to this proposed development. Stewardship is also on record supporting the upholding of the 6.2 acre donation to abut and to extend and be a contiguous part of the conservation land. We understand that there have been other alternatives put forward, but honestly, they're, do they abut the conservation land? No, they don't. So it's a ridiculous alternative that's not in any remote way equivalent. And so, we will continue to oppose it through our committee and hope that this, and we'll be speaking again when it gets before the planning board, thank you.
Abby D'Amirio, 58 Flag Road, elected member of the planning board, but I'm not representing the planning board, speaking as an individual tonight. Since my name was on that decision, I thought maybe I should just get up and say a few words. You guys aren't going crazy. The reason that you don't remember the discussion about the 6.2 acres is because there was no discussion. Laura had put up the decision, but if you pull out the special permit dated June 14th, 2019, application, right in the first part, section one, the proponent makes the offer, makes the offer and says, "The project provides benefit to the town by permanently protecting the rear portion of the parcel, rez A portion of the property, containing approximately 6.2 acres of wooded area. This land would expand upon the town conservation land at Breakneck Hill Road and would either be in the form of conservation restriction or donation of the land to the town. In addition, the project will be supporting the ongoing use of the property, contributing to the town's tax base." I looked through my notes, I looked in my emails, I don't recall any discussion about it, and I just want to, you know, state that we should consider that this was an offer by the proponent, there was no, you know, twisting of the arm and making them donate some land in order to get a garage, it didn't happen that way, and I don't, at least on this appeals board, I don't remember it being discussed at all. And so I think that's really important, because I really feel that this was a gift to the town, and it, and as the Chair of the planning board says, this, what we have in front of us for the zoning board of appeals is different than the major site plan approval for the planning board, but it is a statement of fact that the land was donated to the town, and there was no further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for helping with our memories, we appreciate it.
Thank God it was them.
Feel a lot better now.
Good evening, I'll be very brief, because it's already been long, and I really appreciate this, David Ferris of 118 Turnpike Road, the sponsor of the project, I'll be brief, because I realize this is sort of, in some ways, out of order, in the sense that we are going to be before the planning board, and I don't want to rehash anything that's already been said. I, just as a developer and a 50-plus-year resident of the town, want to say that I recognize in every community, these things are never easy, and in certain locations, residents who have very passionate feelings will come out with pitchforks because it's in their backyard, and it's in a place that really disturbs their peace, and I say their peace because it's just beyond their swimming pool, it's just over their fence, it really impacts people in a very personal way when these things go in the wrong location. And I just want to step back, big picture, and give this board, regardless of how it works at the planning board, the message that there's, there's fair, reasonable, and then there's unreasonable, and I want to give you the commitment that we are going to be tried to be more than reasonable, even though we have, we think legal positions that four or five years from now end up in the same place. We don't want to be the developer that's in contentious five-year paths with a town that I grew up in, that I was educated in, and that I got at the benefit of special ed and everything else. This is a great place, we don't want to wreck it, and I really picked this site with the thought in mind that I wouldn't want this thing in my backyard, where I live currently in the community, and it is off a highway, I think it aligns with the town's goals overall, and we're not looking to get the best deal, we're not looking to get a better deal, we're looking to get a fair deal from the town, and that's why we're going to the table, coming back with some offers to try and make it work. I think if you look at some of the experience and collective wisdom you have on some of the other projects, and the other one that will go forward in the other location at 250, you're going to see very passionate residents, and why I think this location makes the most sense for this community is we only need a few more units to achieve some very important goals where we're protecting all the residents. So, I think Ms. Gillespie made a very good point, which is, you've got to think of this holistically, and the percentage of residents that are using that particular trail system versus the percentage of residents that'll be very upset when a development is pushed in an area that affects dozens of homeowners that made an investment in the community to live a better quality of life, it's going to be very dramatic, and so, think of this as almost in, in, in the, the greater good, I guess is the way I would think of it, in terms of, you really are, if you can get ahead of the, or get around these issues, and, and look at the greater good, which is, you're really very close after this project to protecting the community till 2034, and really giving all the boards the most control in the community, because what you're really doing is you're saying, we can't, we have met the 40B cap, and so now we can pick the locations that are in the best interest of the community. So, with that, I just wanted to wrap up, and I, and I do think that, you know, overall, it's a good location, it's off the highway, I think Madison Place is a good example where it was done responsibly, Bob did a great job, and Bob did write a very strong letter in support of this and other, the other project, in large part because he's been doing it his whole life, and I would ask that maybe you take a look at that at some point. Thanks for the time tonight, guys.
Thank you. Okay, so, we don't have anybody who wants to, okay, I, I think, I feel like we should kind of get to the, the point of the business, which is, I mean, I, I appreciate that you, you wanted to raise it here, but, I mean, you're not, are you, were you, are you hoping for a decision on a special permit tonight?
I don't expect one tonight.
Right, so I, I would suggest that.
No, I think I.
We try to, we continue.
Trying to get to the beginning, we just wanted to start to dial, and I think, you know, we'd probably come to the end of, you know, discussion on this without beating the dead horse.
Okay, so, do you have a, a specific request, as far as continuation?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to point out very quickly, you know, I don't want to burden anybody with the facts, but at the first meeting, we were, we had this discussion that gentleman mentioned about the, you know, necessity of getting planning board approval, and if somebody was to look at our revised plans, we have submitted as subdivision, we saw, so, you know, so we hear, we heard what was said, I just don't like to go backwards, and I ask people to take a look.
Agreed.
Submit it, you know, so when you said you don't want repetition, I don't want repetition either. We modified the plans, suggested the gentleman, he take a look at the plans, and we believe they comport with the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Okay, and that was your request, we agreed to do it, we modified the plan, we were asked to put a sidewalk in, we put a sidewalk in, so, it, again, you know, we go back, but we don't go forward. And lastly, would say, and then we will continue this, I just like to put things in historical perspective, because I want to make sure I haven't lost my mind, the meeting I attended at the first planning Board of Appeals meeting, the, the town council, and I've known Jay for a number of years, more than the members of the board probably have, you know, was supportive and said, you know, this is what we have to do with the project. At that point, the planning board asked to get separate town council to advance their position, okay, tonight, the planning board says, oh, gee whiz, town council, we have to rely on town council, so, it's a shifting winds, and I'm, you know, you people all have common sense, and I'm not going to take it any further than that, you know, and after the meeting, we, you know, we, this first time, this issue was raised, and I will take the chairman's word that it was mentioned potentially in some discussion, you know, with Mass Housing.
Yeah, and I, I really don't want to get into that back and forth, I, I would like to take everything at, at face value. My take is, again, I understand you wanted to, you know, keep the process going, I would like to continue so there's the opportunity to meet with the planning board, I'd like to go back again with Jay, so, I, I guess, I mean, you have a right to the, to the hearing, but at the same time, I'm, I'm really, I'm trying to avoid us starting to raise a bunch of things that are going to be raised further down the road.
I was talking about the process here.
Yeah.
I wasn't talking about the planning board process.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just a simple guy, I came here, it's here at the first meeting, this is the second meeting, okay, and, you know, suddenly town council's opinion wasn't any good at that meeting, now town council's opinion, you know, is viable. In any event, can we pick a date to continue?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for, yes.
And whatever, what's the board's convenience?
What's reasonable, we, we, well, the, you're for the planning board this upcoming Monday?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'd be looking at another available slot, I don't know, we have, now we, then we have to consider everyone else's schedule, what do, what do we have in May?
We have nothing in May.
We have nothing, okay. Okay, I do know that the 22nd would be a problem, May 15th or May 8th would not be a problem for me.
See, you don't have anything in May.
We, yeah, we have.
An hour and a half.
Yeah.
I took it the other way.
Oh, no.
Okay, I got it.
We're wide open in May here.
I know. Now I am.
No, yeah, 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 it's not, we have no available, there's nothing to meet on, yeah.
Learn the negative.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
8th works.
The 8th is the best for me.
8th is the best, Paul?
The 8th? That's good for me. With you?
You good, Paul?
Sure.
Sure, Doris?
If you need me, I'm remote.
What country?
Yeah, I'm out of country.
Okay, before, I'm going to go to the microphone.
I just, I'll keep this real quick, it's just Eric Lazer, 9 Skylar Drive, just a maybe dumb question, and I've seen this a lot at these meetings where we talk about town council's opinion, why isn't town council here to actually communicate it? Not to say we have to litigate the issue.
No.
But I've seen that a lot, where it's always about town council, but he's never at the meetings.
Well, I, I would take exception to that, he is, he has been at the 40B meetings where we have.
40B meetings, but not a lot of these meetings.
Well, the, right, right, and I think he, he had a reason why he couldn't be here this evening, I believe, so.
So it's not a procedural issue?
No.
Could have, or maybe should be here, because I think to the applicant's point, you get more clarity, and it's a lot more efficient, I'm going to just state in the obvious.
I would agree, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yes, if you could, make it quick, please. Whoa.
My wood fellas.
Please don't trip.
I, I appreciate Mr. Ferris's comments, I think he states his position very clearly, and I realize that we're talking about a trade-off between affordable housing and conservation land, but it's a lot more complicated than that, and I think the board is going to need more time, the planning board needs more time, your peer review needs more time, I think a month is probably not enough, I mean, this is a high-level decision-making board, you're the last board that makes decision on a comprehensive permit, and I think it's important that all the other boards and process need to happen before you guys make a decision.
Right, well. Well, I'm just, I'm just going to say that the peer review, all that is going to happen anyway. Really, what we're talking about here is, is simply a matter of the land donation. So, so your request is to continue to May eighth, correct?
Everything.
Yeah, everything. And that would be the three components of this, of the hearing tonight. You vote on, on continuing that, correct? Okay, we need a motion to continue the hearing to May eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to continue this hearing to May eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm going to second it.
Second, okay. Motion has been made to continue to May eighth, twenty, I wasn't twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. We have minutes to do, right?
Yeah.
Minutes. I know what you mean.
Okay. The other items on the agenda?
No, it's gone. That's not how town works. Yeah, this is going to be a lot of hearings.
All right. So, all right, we have, we have two more items that we need to, or to deal with. The first one is approval of meeting minutes dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. That was what, what hearing was that since I'm not really.
You had to ask.
Yeah.
That one.
Oh.
Don't you miss this?
She's got her own headaches. This was.
Everybody was present. It was one-twenty.
Was it? Oh, I'm, yeah, you're right. I'm looking at the April third ones. What was? Okay, so the, the March twenty-seventh, let's just try to take care of the business here, was a hearing on one-twenty Turnpike Road. Basically, there were, they were seeking a continuation to tonight, noting the applicant has produced updated waivers list, et cetera, et cetera. I asked about the planning board meeting on April one. That was the one where they had the problem with the not notifying Butters. That's, and then we approved other minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
All right. Motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Mike?
Aye.
Doris? Paul?
Aye.
Jamie? And Doug, you were, you were part of this one, so.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, William's aye, okay. Those are approved. So the, that leaves the April third minutes.
Paul and Jamie would not vote on these.
Paul and Jamie don't need to vote on this. This was Zero Turnpike Road, otherwise known as. Park Central, yeah. So here, they, again, this was the, the hearing where they requested a ninety-one day continuance.
Right.
The largest part of the minutes here are just a debate about why are we letting it go? So I don't know if Doris or, or Doug, if you had a, if you, you took a look at those minutes, if you had any issues with the minutes as written. It was a continuance. Yep.
But we did get into some, like, that's because, because of the, my, that, I'm fine with it. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, you did have a diatrite. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
That's, that's a, that's a bone, man.
So the, the, the feedback, the feedback I'm getting is that these minutes are fine as well? Okay. April third. Second. All right. Motion to approve the April third mean minutes has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris? Doug?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, those are approved. Great, thank you. So the only other thing we have on the agenda is upcoming meetings, which is right now is May, as we just. Yeah, is that off?
Yeah. Yeah.
Not that I don't cherish every moment.
Just remotely, that's fine.
Remotely, okay.
Okay. And then it's just June, June twenty-sixth after that.
June twenty-sixth? Okay. You have something for that or no?
The deadline is next week.
Okay.
But we'll likely have two.
Okay. All right. Likely to, yeah, you know they're coming, okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's, that's all we've got, right?
All we got.
That's all we have for the, on the agenda this evening, unless somebody has something they feel like they need to talk about. Or we make it Paul's moment.
Seeing that we've wrapped everything up, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
William's aye. Thank you very much. That concludes our hearing.
Paul, I screwed it up. I tried to like.